I now call to order the City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, Monday, June 27, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Peltz.
Here.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Here.
Commissioner Kling.
Here.
Vice Chairman Garrison.
Present.
Chairwoman Mastin.
Here.
Approve the minutes from our last meeting on May 16, 2022. Do any of the commissioners have any corrections or additions to the minutes? All right. So. Move to approve. Do I have a second? And make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimously carried. Our next. Reports and updates, and I know we do have some.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gary Davis with City Community Development, filling in for. Just a few announcements. First of all, we've brought in our new planner on her first day with the city. This is Tina Hayden. We're very happy to have her on board. She will be. Well, Jim will break her in, and she'll be replacing Jim Paget, who is retiring in, how many hours? Several hours from now, actually a couple of weeks yet.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No, we cannot adjourn, in your honor. Afraid, afraid we can't. Let's see, the, just wanted to look.
Hundred and ninety-two hours.
Hundred and ninety-two hours, I'm informed.
Wow, that was great.
We do have. Motion on the commission that's still open, so hopefully we'll be able to fill that fairly soon. Anybody in the sound of my voice that wants to do that, contact. And wanted to let you know that the City Council approved that zoning ordinance amendment about design review applicability, where if a project is not visible from a, from a public road, from a collector or arterial, the, the planning director does have the ability to follow the, the procedures themselves. Time for people who aren't developing something that's very, very visible. And also, the, the City Council approved the Phase Three final plat for the vineyards.
Okay.
So, that's, that's done. And that's, that's the end of my report.
Let our newest commissioner introduce herself, if you name a little bit about you.
My name is Randy Stevens. I'm a former City of Cottonwood employee, and I work for Town of Clarkville, and I'm happy to serve. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. We're very glad to have you. It's always exciting to get new blood.
Commissioner Stevens is also on the Historic Preservation Commission, has been for three years, right? So she's got a lot of that background and experience.
Like, really. Next, we have called the public. If anyone here. Not on the agenda this evening, please fill out one of the forms located on the little table in the back and bring it forward. All right, I'm going to assume that that means that nobody would like to come forward with anything, and I'm going to close the call to public and move on. We're going to open with one item of old. Design review for perimeter wall for an approved apartment complex, and I'll turn it over to city staff.
Thank you, Chairwoman Mastin, members of the commission. As you stated, this is.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. This is a design review 20-008. This is a 44-unit apartment complex. It was approved by the commission in. One of the stipulations that they placed on this was to bring back, there was some discussion on the height of a wall, that at the time did not meet code requirements. Since then, there have been a couple of text amendments, but they were asked to come back after those text amendments were in place, show the wall and. Tonight is only the wall aspect, not the entire design review for the complex. As I stated, it's a 44-unit complex. It's on the northeast corner of Cherry and 12th Street. It's where the old drive-in theater used to be located many, many years ago. The wall that they're proposing would be a total of six feet in height, which. Solid CMU block wall topped on, with a top on that of a two-foot chain, chain link, wrought iron fence, and each column would be six feet in height. So the fence would only be five feet four inches, the columns themselves would be six feet, and that, that does meet our new code requirement for that height of a wall in that location. As I. And this is the site plan as it's shown. Cherry is along the bottom, 12th on the left of the screen. And this is what is, in this. The Cherry Street frontage. The side facing other internal properties would be a solid six-foot masonry wall. So as you can see, that design of the lower portion being solid with the wrought iron, and then the columns extending a little bit higher than that. Just a little different graphic of the same, the same wall. And another layout of the complex, as you see, it can access off of Cherry and off of 12th Street. There's Cherry. This is a architectural rendering of the complex that was approved since most of you were not here at the time. I just sort of wanted to throw this in to see, have you have a big picture of, of the overall. Some of the, there's a single car garage for each unit, in addition to the outdoor uncovered parking. So that is all that's, I have to present this evening. Questions of staff?
Hi.
And we do have the applicant here this evening, if there's any questions of a technical nature that you would need to ask them.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? And. But just a reminder, the design review is only for the wall. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So with that, since we don't have any questions, is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on? All right, I'm going to close the floor of the public. Would any of the commissioners like to share any thoughts on the project? All right. Then we are ready to entertain a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
I move to approve DR 20-008 wall plan to allow the construction of a six-foot wall along the south property line at a 44-unit multifamily complex. Should that be south and west property line? Or is that? Complex at 313-08 East Cherry Street, subject to the following stipulations. The project shall be developed in conformance with the plan submitted with this application reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 27, 2022. The project shall comply with. And a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued within 24 hours from the date of this, 24 months from the date of this approval. That's quick. And I heard no other stipulations being requested.
All right, roll call vote please. What was it? Oh, a second. I am so sorry. Can I get a second?
I'll make a second to approve the motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Kling.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison.
Yes.
Chairwoman Mastin.
Yes. All in favor? Unanimously carried. Very good. Have a great evening. Sometimes when they're too easy, I get ahead of myself. All right, now we have new business. Our. Which is a request for a design review for a coffee shop. Human Bean.
Thank you. Once again, Chairwoman Mastin, members of the commission, as you stated, this is a design review application for a, for the Human Bean Coffee Shop. C2, and it's proposed with rather small 600-square-foot pre-manufactured building that would be constructed off-site and brought into that location. They have one additional space. Should they be very successful? And it meets all the landscape and setback requirements. This is just, it's close to the intersection of 12th Street and the bypass road 89A. That is the True Value on the north side, the former APS Building, just to the, to the left, to the west there. But they're proposing the one access off of 89A. They have had communication with ADOT regarding that access, which we recommend to all applicants if they're on any state. With ADOT probably before they come and see us. But they do have their preliminary approval from, from ADOT. This is their landscape plan. It's a little bit small there to show every plant in, in detail, but it does exceed the code requirements for three. Along the frontage, and they have a significant amount of landscaping throughout the rest of the site as well. This is an architectural rendering of the 600-square-foot building, sort of an aerial This is what you would see on the, from the east. There are two, excuse me, two walk-up windows, one here on the east side, one around to the, to the right on the north, and then the drive-through lane would be on the left as you're looking at this elevation. This would be the scene. And floor plan, there's no interior customer seating. There would be some outdoor and the walk-up windows. And once again, the landscape plan, and that is all I have. The applicant is here this evening also, if you have any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for city staff?
I, I do. I'm not sure if it's staff or. I'm curious why the driveway is being moved. It puts it in direct alignment with the Sears across the street, and it also puts it in. Next door, which is the old hacienda, the Howling Coyote. I'm just wondering if, if it wouldn't be better placed where it is currently, which is between the. I get that it moves it further away from the intersection, but it, it also puts it straight in line with the path of another high-use driveway, and it just seems to be, you know, we're, that, that's already a very congested. Seem that the bulk of the traffic will be exiting left out of that property, not right. And so you're having to not only pay attention to five lanes of traffic, but two other driveways that conflict with it. So I'm just curious if staff had talked to them about keeping the driveway.
We looked at their site plan and felt that it made, made sense. We did not have a discussion over it being moved to the other location. I know that ADOT, having their input. Comments regarding the, I'm looking through these real quick here, the location of, of that, and they are not restricting it to a right-in, right-out only. The intersection then, if it were moved west?
Maybe applicant could answer that?
Yes, yes. Go ahead and come forward. Please introduce your.
I'm Sean Kumar. I'm, I'm one of the principals at Engineering Alliance Incorporated. With me is Ali Woford, he's one of the owner, who's, who's going. For almost a year. We went through the whole traffic impact analysis. We went through back and forth on how the traffic is going to go. For a building, how many vehicles we are anticipating a different time zones or different times during the peak hours or non. Lead that the location that we have shown on here, that was the most suited, mostly because you need to maintain certain, certain way, but the stacking is going, going to take place, the way how the vehicles are going to go in the driveway and come out. And then they. The trash impactors, the parking spaces in and out, the flow onto the highway is not posing any safety concern. So that's how they came up with that location. It's also because there is electrical power pole, high, high power transmission lines. There are huge storm sewers and sanitary sewer that's all running over there. There, there's one right in the center. They usually just do that, or they were used to do that when the highways were originally designed, just to provide, let the public know that, okay, there is this empty property, it will have an approved access. And ADOT refused to give it to us. They said, no, you guys will have to build it here ADA compliant ramp as per the current ADOT standards. So that's what they wanted, then we agreed upon, and application is all. Drawings that we have submitted today, and we are anticipating that approval any day now. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Add to that, I don't know for a fact whether this entered into ADOT's thinking on the location of the driveway, but we find very often that ADOT and our traffic engineers like to line up driveways with. Aren't conflicting left turns in the middle. If the driveways are offset in the wrong direction, sometimes there's a game of chicken, people turning in the middle, so that may have been a factor on this as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions? Okay. So. Anyone in the gallery? I'm going to close the floor, and I'm going to give each of the commissioners a chance to make any comments. Are there any comments about the project? We always start with the newest commissioner.
This will be exciting if we pass it, a new business in Cottonwood.
No comment.
Opportunity to try the human bean in Phoenix, and it opened right before I moved to Cottonwood, and I was very bummed to not have it right around my corner, and I'm happy to have it nearby, so.
Happy to see a new business come into.
I'm going to be interested to see how you do straight across the street from your competition. But I, I'm going to be glad to see a lot that's been sitting empty for a long time on. Less weed-infested than it is currently, so welcome to the neighborhood and look to see this go up fairly quickly, so welcome.
Personally, in addition to being always excited to invite a new business into the community, I am really thrilled with your landscape plan. I know we're not discussing that tonight, but it's, it looks very lush, and I am. I hope that that's not overly optimistic, because I think it would be great. So, having had a chance to hear everybody's comments, I would say I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I move to approve DR 22-006 for the. The project shall be developed in conformance with the development plans as submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the June 27, 2022 meeting. The project shall conform to Code Review Board. Four from the CRB meeting on June 15, 2021. The project shall comply with all building engineering and fire department requirements. And FAA requirements prior to the issuance of building permits, and remind me, I want to talk about that later. A certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued within 24 months of the planning commission action.
Second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Peltz.
Yes.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Yes.
Commissioner Kling.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison.
Yes.
Chairwoman Mastin.
Yes. All in favor? I'm just having fun with words today. Congratulations. You didn't have to make a hard sell, it looks good.
It looks much prettier than the picture.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item we have is a request for a zone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gary Davis with Community Development. This is. By staff in order to resolve a little issue we've got on our zoning maps. Proposal is to rezone about 93 acres in total, and do a general plan amendment on almost three of those acres. The proposal is to rezone school properties and county properties. Mostly residential to CF, which is Community Facility Zone, and that allows the uses that are shown here, parks, cemeteries, public schools, fairgrounds and clinics, airports, government administration. So we have a zone for this, and for whatever reason, even though the general plan calls for most of this to be zoned for that type of use, it has remained in residential zoning, which we would like to. Regulations, so we would like to remove those gray areas and rezone that to the proper zone, which is Community Facility. This is a long list of all the parcels that are, that are included in this. You can see that most of these are zoned currently R1 and R3. There's some AR20. There's a little. Which we'll see on the map, and also an old zone CO, which doesn't appear in our zoning ordinance anywhere. It's something that is a remnant apparently of an old zone when areas were annexed from the county. So CO stands for Old County Zone, apparently. Once this. Last of it, so that would complete the books on that issue. But you can see there's four parcels that are Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, four parcels that are Yavapai County, I believe there are three that are owned by the city, and four that are owned by Mingus Union High School District. So to. Cross-hatched areas show, and it's in your packet as well, show the proposed areas for rezoning from R1. The CF Community Facility Zone. So that's the zoning. This. Plan does have a public facilities designation on it, which agrees with what is being proposed here tonight, with the exception of one parcel that's owned by the school. It was, it was acquired later, that's where they store their school buses. In this particular map, in the Mingus Sixth Street area, Mingus being here, Willard, and Sixth Street. So this is the community school, middle school, county complex, and the. Are down here, as well as the police and fire station at, at Sixth and Aspen. Going to the other area, on the south side of town, this is the Mingus Union area. This is First Street and. So this area is all zoned AR20 with the exception of, this is that piece of CO zoning right here, and there's also a little sliver just to the south of the high school property that was zoned C2 that the high school acquired at some point. So these are the areas. The, that area is the only portion in this area that's not planned for public facilities, and that's planned for GC right now. That's about a, I think a quarter acre or half an. Opposed for the land use plan designation as well. So we're looking at two actions in one here, basically, and it's going to take two motions. And one to amend, do a minor amendment to the land use plan to change those about three acres over to the PSP land use designation. And that concludes my presentation. With all rezones, we had a neighborhood meeting and invited all the property owners that own property within 300 feet of all these parcels, and we had two people show up, and they wanted to talk about some. Anyway, folks had their chance, we've notified obviously the school districts and the county, they, they don't have any objections on this. So, again, I'm happy to answer any questions you've got.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. I got a couple. What, I don't understand why this is being done, number one, so could you maybe?
Give us a better explanation of why we're going through a lot of work.
The Chairman Garrison, the zones, AR20, R1, R3, do allow schools as. When there are other issues that come up, like if they want to put in a sign, for instance. Our sign code is much more restrictive in residential zones than in commercial. Our sign code is much more restrictive in residential zones than in commercial, or non-residential zones. So and it's, and there may be an argument that the public use, especially with the county, may override cities zoning authority. There's still a question as to if we standards in a residential zone, is some, is that possibly going to be challenged? Something that may or may not ever come up, but it's something that, again, we just wanted to clean the books up and in anticipation for our update of the general plan, make our zoning actually match the general plan in these particular areas that they are existing right now.
So, what's the likelihood this will that opens up in a neighborhood? It could be argued that that's a community facility, because it is a school, yet it's sitting right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. How, what, what could be done for them to make the argument that they also don't have to comply with the sign, as your example ordinance, because they're no different than Cottonwood Oak Creek or Mingus Union High School?
I think of whether that public entity, the school district or the county, has any precedence over the, over the city regulations. The city would clearly have, I think, precedence over a private school, even though a private school would be among the list of residential zone. So the sign would be fairly restrictive if, if a, if a school went in, in a residential zone. Very often those, those schools go in in commercial zones, so it's not an issue.
Can I, and I just want to add, this is also making it so that the zoning matches the master plan, whereas if a new school gets added into a existing residential area, obviously, we're not going to alter it.
Of, of thinking that, you know, because I had a school try and move into me, into my neighborhood and right next door to me. And the ability of our strict that in a residential neighborhood was, was very little. And so, following that line of thinking, I'm, I'm just wondering if you're opening a door for allowing less, less guidance and less restrictions on people that take in and remove property from a residential use and make it a, what I would deem a commercial use, but they could argue that's a community facility. So I'm, I'm just going down that path of thinking of trying to, to, to hope we don't create a problem that comes back to bite us. And, and you answered most of my question, which is, we're doing this basically to try and plan into compliance with something that's more realistic with the actual use of the property.
Right.
So, so that being stated, I'll, I'll move on to my other questions, which is, right there, you're showing the high school, and, and they've got that huge tract of R2 right across the street, and I'm curious why that wasn't included in the high school's parcels.
The high school has been discussing a number of different uses for that parcel, which may or may not involve a school in educational use. So, they've been talking maybe about making it available for personally involved in those conversations, but that, that may be an option. And when we discussed it with the high school, they said, "Yeah, we, we don't need to, need to entertain that one." And that is also a zone, an area that is not planned for, for public facilities, that's planned for medium density residential, basically the equivalent of R2 zoning.
But it's currently being used for parking lot. So, I, I would argue that it's a current facility of the high school, even though they may choose to sell it as a residential subdivision in the future.
Right.
Okay. And hopefully, my last question. I'm wondering why you properties in, in this list of community facility properties that are being converted, because those are typically in the middle of neighborhoods and, and residential areas, and it would seem that you would just clean house and do them all at once and, and remove that problem instead of leaving them excluded.
Chair, the, this is a phased project. This is kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will. These are the ones that the, the general plan already says this should be public facility zoning. Some of those other areas designated for that, and we can address that during the update of the general plan, when we have the, have the book open on changing all the, considering all the current land use designations on there, and seeing what makes sense. If there are some qualities that are shown on the, on the land use plan designations as something other than public uses, then we can go in and, and take care of those and make sure they're appropriate.
And I noticed the airport's not
Airport is all zoned I2, even the runway areas, even the public, all the areas that aren't leased. And that might be another thing that we look at with
The overflow areas, the approach and the
It's all zoned industrial, and I believe it's all designated for industrial as well.
All right, thank you very much.
I know sometimes questions begat questions. Do the commissioners have All right, thank you very much. I'm going to quickly, we have one public member here. Did you have any questions about this project? Okay. All right, so now, I believe, we are ready to entertain a couple of motions, Mr. Vice Chair.
I move to recommend approval to the City Council for Z22-02 to change the zoning classification from R1, R3, AR20 for approximately 93 acres of publicly-owned land.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Stevens? God?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Yes.
Chairwoman Maston?
Yes. Carried. And then I believe there's another motion.
I move to recommend approval to the City Council for GP22-001 to change the land use designations from residential, low-density, and general commercial to public, semi-public, and institutional for approximately three acres of publicly-owned land.
Thank you. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peltz?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Yes.
Chairwoman Maston?
Yes. Unanimous vote. We are now moving on to our next agenda item. I have lost my place in my document. It will give, take me just a second. All right. So, next up, we have a request for, whoops. This is the general Oh, sorry.
Yes, we just had that.
Oh, we just, of course.
Did we get that right? Was that only three acres for the general?
For the general plan, correct.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
All right. 22-003. No.
ZO2203.
ZO22003. All right. The next zoning change.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready now. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gary Davis again. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, not a zoning map change. This is another little issue that we're ordinance right now, a provision where in most of our residential zones, a small utility building, like a wellhouse, electrical switch station, things like that, those are conditional uses, which means they require a conditional use permit. Those types of uses don't normally require the same size an occupied building would require in that zone. And there are several such facilities around town currently that do have very small parcels surrounding them. They don't need to have enough for parking and landscaping and all that. It's just very basic little shed. As to do one of those things, like we have a proposal right now for a, for a well building. As it's proposed right now, if that property was to be sold, it would have to be a, if it's an AR20 a half an acre lot, which really isn't needed for one of those. So what we're proposing is, in those zones, the GA, the AR zones, and the R1, 2, 3, 4 allow the conditional use permit to apply not only to permitting that small use, but also to permit a lot size that's smaller than the, than the minimum Other thing we're doing in this, in this draft is proposing to add the word unoccupied public utility buildings to make it very, very this building for, for a utility or anything that's going to be occupied, that needs parking, that has people inside of it. This is just for a, a small utility facility. So that's, that's the rationale behind this. Proposing is the same nine times in a row. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, if you have any questions for staff? It just sort of makes sense. This is one of the many housekeeping things that the city staff is trying to do to help things move forward in a logical way and in an efficient way with applicants. I believe we've and hear from the public, so I'm going to go ahead and close the floor. And I believe that we're ready to entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval to the City Council of proposed, proposed amendment to Section 410, 411, 412 15, 416, 425, and 428 regarding public utility facilities as conditional uses.
Can we get a second?
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peltz?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Yes.
Chairwoman Maston?
Yes. Unanimously carried. Let's talk about clusters.
Yes, let's.
I'm actually super excited about this. Take it away.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Gary Davis again. We do have an item that we wanted to discuss with the Planning Commission before we put together a zoning cluster subdivisions, which is something that's used in a lot of other jurisdictions. Places that I've worked before use this, and it has some wrote a little memo, kind of describing it and proposing some, some provisions that we would, could put in the ordinance. But the idea behind it is this, a conventional subdivision, right now in our zoning code, this, our zoning one way and one way only, and that's minimum lot size. So every lot in a subdivision has to be a certain size. If this type of subdivision, for example, is AR70, 8,000 square feet, 1.6 acres, then every single, and it's big enough to have, in this case, 18 houses on it for, for that density, then every single lot must be 1.6 acres. What a cluster in this, in the land that may be not appropriate for development, or you want to keep it as a feature, like a hilltop, or a very steep slope, or a wash, there's really no way to accommodate that in this type to remove lots, because no lot can be smaller than 30, than 70,000 square feet. So these areas would have to be taken out potentially as separate tracts, but then you get fewer units in here. Alternative 18 houses in this particular example, which I just found randomly on the internet, doing a search on cluster subdivisions, but it served our purposes pretty well. And, so it's the same exact density as the conventional subdivision, but it allows for reserve tracts to be dedicated either to a homeowner's park, whatever. Those reserve tracts would not be developed. So, this is the density you get on into the future. Same density again as the, as the conventional. Another advantage of this type of development is, in a lot of cases, the amount of road line, the amount of sewer line you need is much less if you've just got a few lots to serve in a, in a small isolated area, as opposed to trying to run a road throughout an entire area. So that cuts down on the need developer, reduces costs, hopefully can be passed on to property owners in the future. So this is the basic idea of how a cluster subdivision would work. On the second page of the rules as to what the lot size would be, comparing the conventional lot size, for instance, AR20, minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet. If you go with the cluster option, the minimum lot size could be 10,000 square feet, as long as at least 20% of the site is left in reserve. So it's got that property has to be in reserve. In other words, how much good you can do with it. You can't just dedicate a little sliver and you can get reduced lot sizes. It has to be doing some good as, as, as far as providing some, some open space. 7, that's our new two-acre zone right now. Two acres is the required minimum lot size, 80,000, 87,000 square feet. And then the lot size could be 35,000 square feet, as long as 40% of the site is in cluster. Again, each one of these lots could be as small as 35,000 square feet. We're not proposing going really small lots with this. What we're proposing here, especially 7, is 35,000 square foot lots, which are still big enough where you don't have to do mass grading. They can still be, you just grade out the, the pad for the house in the driveway, and the rest could be left natural. Benefit of that type of development with, with the added benefit of the, of the, of the open space dedicated. This could be a issue, it could be an advantage with a couple of larger projects years, hopefully, that could affect hillsides, riparian areas, leaving more years, hopefully, that could affect hillsides, riparian areas, leaving more flexibility for those areas to be left in reserve and not have to piece them up as lots. So just wanted to run out that table if we want to move forward. It would probably be not only a zoning ordinance amendment, but it would also probably be an which I believe you would also see.
Commissioners, if anyone has any questions, please go ahead.
Yeah, so basically what you're stating regular topography, so it's not going to be like cookie gutter homes. I think that's a great idea.
Could this example be used in Spring Creek?
Yes. Something like this for when we're very conscious about preserving riparian areas, hillside vistas, if there's an ability to cluster lots.
There's a lot of areas out there that Spring Creek
Yep.
And it's a unique site, and I can see where that would be beneficial because the conventional is set up now, and it's just a mess out kind of like saving the environment or keeping that area to what it is. It's a unique site, and would this be considered for that type of development, this cluster subdivision?
If it's in our In Spring Creek, back before the city annexed it, when it was still in the county, it had the two acre zoning, two acre rural zoning, and originally the developers were going to develop that whole thing just like this. And 30 some lots that they developed exactly this way on the western edge of that. The roads are in, I believe even utilities are in, but it never developed. They wanted to do something different. But Plan A for that site.
So we're talking about Spring Creek, because that's currently zoned AR?
87.
87. So are you looking to propose this only is pushed down to AR zoned parcels? Or are you open size for a PAD?
It depends on how the ordinance amendment is written. If it's written the way it's shown here, for example, as the proposal we give as an example, your minimum lot sizes would be limited changing zonings, you wouldn't be changing densities, you'd be keeping the density exactly the same. It's just the lot sizes.
From AR 87, or what'd you say?
Yes, AR 87.
To a PAD, how does that affect this type of a proposal?
The PAD, Master Development Plan, could provide a plan exactly like this. The PAD doesn't give a minimum lot size, doesn't give a density, it's just subject to whatever is proposed and approved under the Master Development Plan. So it could look very much the same, or portions of that property could stay AR 87 and be developed in this sort of configuration without come in, or any other project could come in, either for a PAD to do something like this, or to do a cluster subdivision.
So what I like is, I like the fact that you're allowing a developer to come in and contemplate the use of open space in their design. Stick to this one formula and we move forward. The problem with that is, and I'll go right to Spring Creek, is when they were proposing their development out there, they have some significant slope issues on site, yet their plan not take into account slopes. And so what I'm concerned about specifically with Spring Creek a proposal being put forward is that somehow we allow them to take into account that slope and condense the lots to such a small size to continue but count up to the point that we end up with almost a multifamily situation. Does that make sense?
Yes. Scenario you're describing could be done only under a PAD because type of use, and the lot size, in this case, per this example, lot size would be no smaller than 35,000 square feet. Is currently the PAD process is the only mechanism in terms of arranging lots to avoid places that you want to avoid, hilltops, riparian areas. It comes through and is approved by Planning Commission and City Council, then it could be a dense lot sizes in development in small parts of the parcel and leave other areas undeveloped. But if there's lots that a developer wants to keep as AR 87, AR 70, very similar product at the end, without going to those really high densities in spots like you're describing.
Okay, thank you very
And they'd still have to go through design review either way, correct?
No, Madam Chairman, not necessarily. If it's a single family house, it does not would go through the subdivision plating process, and you would see a subdivision plat. So you'd see a preliminary subdivision plat that would look something like this that you would get with a conventional subdivision. We've checked the lot sizes, they meet the minimum lot sizes for cluster, and it meets the minimum area that's set aside for reserve.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Change, because I don't see the change where the minimum reserve track, as you're saying, the minimum reserve track with a cluster subdivision, wouldn't mean that minimum site, 20 percent, 30 percent, or 40 percent for each home, so would it limit basically the development of those, that site?
The
Presently it doesn't, stake that?
The minimum would apply to the whole property. In other words, if it says 20, 30, 40 percent, that means 20 or 30, 40 percent of the whole property must be set aside. And mathematically, I believe these lot sizes 35,000 square foot lots, there would still be plenty of room for 30 percent of the site to be set aside. Thank you.
Go some of the other commissioners. I really like this for, I mean, I hate to keep bringing up one specific potential project over and over, but I do think that for situations like Spring to maintain really key environmental areas that a lot of the local citizens are concerned about protecting. And I think that this gives the city a simpler path those riparian areas safe and protected while also providing us with the housing that everyone is interested in developing, myself included. So, and I also think like in the long term, these kind of developments where things cottonwood, because it prevents us in our development from turning into just an ocean of tiki-taki. You have so every development isn't fully developed, it's more of a balance between nature and the developed space. So that's just speaking for myself, not for the commission, and I encourage anyone else.
Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry if I could, please, I just feel obligated for the record, the city has not received anything for Spring Creek.
Yeah, this is not Spring Creek specifically.
We have no plans, nothing. We're still waiting for a proposal from the owners.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I know that's very important for the people watching us on Facebook.
So I have one more question while we're at it. Left, there would be no HOA required, but under the proposal for the right, I would have to assume either the city would have to take responsibility for that open space, or the developer would have to create an HOA.
Another possibility might be a conservancy group. Open spaces like that, that's something that could be, could have some flexibility within the however we write this.
Would be somebody on the hook?
Somebody would own that.
To maintain and take care of that space.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I don't think we, I mean, we're not voting on this today, so it's just a question and answer period. Go ahead.
So there would not be a potential for that open space to be redeveloped or rezoned at some point?
Side on the plat as open space, if somebody were to come in 20 years from now to resubdivide that somehow and try and get more that says, no, you shall not, you shall not subdivide this. And the only other issue on this is some jurisdictions place a minimum size for the overall parcel. It's there might be a reason for a very large development if the city somehow wanted to essentially force a PAD development. I'm not sure an issue, but just wanted to bring that up there and put it in your mind as we go forward with this, if we do go forward. Scenarios where you might not want to have this available to very small lots, like say under 20 acres or something, but even so, there might be some advantage protected, washes, maybe advantage on all size of lots, whether it's 20 acres, or 200, or 2,000 acres.
So my first thought was, if we had a developer come in on 100 acre parcel or 200 acre parcel utilize this scenario for saying, we're going to create open space that we're utilizing for public good and physical fitness, and create a golf course in that open space, allowing them thereby to reduce the size of the lot. Be concerned about that. My second is, if you go even further, within the last year, we had a proposal come to us to put in a gigantic water park and other water features and open space up and I could see them using this same scenario to try to say that this fits in with open space and creating cluster development within that, that I think at that point was over 2,000 acres. But I guess I've just, back to some of the other saying, this has created a way for them to take and change the way they develop property that isn't necessarily fitting in with the altruistic ideas that we have right now, which is creating a really neat way to take a piece of land, make it personal, make case, and at the end of the day, ending up with basically the same thing we would have before, but with much better curb appeal and sellability, and something we would much rather see in our community. I'm just always worried and go the other direction for their own good, which at the end of the day won't be our good.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman, that's a good point, and the subdivision ordinance, exactly how these tracts are to be used. Places I've worked before, they describe that exactly. This can be natural open space, possibly with detention basin that's landscaped, so it's not maybe completely untouchable, so it can be used, you know, you maybe run utilities across its natural state. We can look at options like that, but we definitely have the ability to word that very tightly.
So could we expect that Jim could get that written up and retire?
I think that's entirely appropriate. I think that would be a wonderful parting gift from Jim.
He has 194 hours, I think.
The problem.
Thank you very much.
So you're basically saying you'd get rid of the conventional and go to cluster?
No, it'd be an option.
You'd have a ball still?
It's just
Okay.
It's kind of like how the old, like the specific old town zoning that we have for the, to make some of the historic accommodations, or you can use
Think in most cases, developers would be very encouraged to do this. Like I said, there's probably less infrastructure involved, and they don't have to build roads up the sides of hills where they
There's
Yeah. Plus, it's
I actually do tend to think that maybe there should be a maximum lot size, if only because the nature of this, as you've explained it, is that it will prevent future development to infinity, or at least and I think that there is a scenario where a developer might come in and have an extremely large lot and an extremely large area that's set aside. The city might really want to develop, depending on how things go. So it, I think, I don't know what the maximum lot size would be off the top of my head, but just something for staff to think about.
Yes, Madam You're talking about a maximum overall site size?
Yes, overall site size.
Of say 100 acres, 200 acres, something like that.
I think 200 acres is, sounds good.
And 2,000 acres could come in, 100 acres at a time and develop this way.
Yeah.
And not do the whole thing necessarily where you've got 2,000 units clustered on one side and then
Yes.
It's a possibility.
It's kind of farfetched, but it's good to be prepared.
It's worth
But in the city, there aren't that many big tracts
Just the one that's kind of close down to Count Verde, right?
We have a couple, we have a lot of, there's a 260 quarter that would fall in that, plus we're moving our way
Yeah.
All right. If it's the commission's pleasure, we can start working on that, maybe get something back to you by August, the first draft.
Yes, it's very Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And I believe, I believe And I believe, I believe that's pretty much it, unless there's anything that any of my fellow commissioners would like to discuss.
Not discussion items, I guess, it's the suggestion topic.
Yeah, suggested topics.
I'm wondering if we can't bring in the new director of the airport facility and to talk to us about why his line keeps coming up on our, on our stipulation backus property, which we approved last meeting, was half, was over half a mile away from the airport. This one is easily a mile and a half away from the airport, and I'm just curious why we continue to see the airport come up on our stipulations for development and land that really doesn't impede or impact the airport in any manner whatsoever. So I was hoping maybe we could get the director of the airport
Sure, we can, we can check on bringing him in. Vice Chair.
Specifically for that. Thank you. Because Ron Santo is probably the answer. My number one complaint is the airport. We bring it up I, I know in the past, there was developments that were put in that were specific to the flight pattern of the airport and noise and, and those types of restrictions. I'm just wanting to know if this is going to be something we should be expecting to see on everything moving forward. And the reason for that.
That is very good. We, guess what? I lost my spot again. All right. I make a motion to adjourn. Yes, seconded. Someone?
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I get excited, and I forget Robert's rules of order, and it's all chaos.